All right, we're on. Ready? You guys ready? Good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, August the 2nd, 2022. We welcome you here this evening. We are honored for your presence and we would like to have several things that we're going to be doing tonight. Before we get started, we would like to do our roll call so we'll know who is with us and who might be on our Zoom call tonight. So we'll start with our members up here on the podium and I'll start with Mr. Greer on my right and we'll come around.
Kent Greer, good evening.
Ralph Freshwood.
Joe Gibbons.
David Stevens.
Ike Perkins.
Jonathan Beal.
City Attorney TJ Rohr.
Thank you, sir. And let's get Mr. Hildebrand, our City Manager.
Scott Hildebrand.
Yes, sir. Communications Director, thank you. Back in the back. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Kenny. And over here this side. Jonathan, thank you. Yes, sir. Thank you. Director, okay. And let's see, we have anybody on our Zoom, let's check in. Chrissy Thomas, our Mayor Pro Tem is not with us, let's see if she's on. And she's not, I think she's on vacation. Todd Perdue. Councilmember. Todd is also not on, he's out of town as well. Okay, Donna Bean, our Finance Director.
I'm here.
Thank you, Donna. Kaywin Horn, Economic Development, and she's on, she's gone to the Main Street Conference, so no, she's out. Okay, I think we've got everybody. If I left anybody out, please let me know, we welcome Katie from the News Topic is here with us. Thank you, Katie, for being here covering us tonight and others we will meet as we move along through our meeting tonight, so thank you very much. All right, as we normally do, we'll get started in a few minutes with our moment of silence and our pledge of allegiance. Before we go to that, I would like for you to keep several of our families, as it has been a tough, hard week on some of our City Lenore workers, we would like to extend our sympathies and condolences to the family and friends and workers of Mr. Matt Powell. Matt was a member of our Parks and Recreation Department staff and we will miss him, we lost him this week and we will keep him and his family pleased and your thoughts and prayers as we go to that. And also continue with your prayers, please, for former Lieutenant Sam Smith of our Fire Department. Sam is at Mission in Asheville with some issues going on, so please keep Sam and his family as well in your thoughts and prayers, excuse me, tonight. And before we do that, I do have a couple of nice announcements. We would like to congratulate Mr. A. Brent Phelps, who has successfully completed the Course of Instruction in Municipal Administration and is awarded this certificate from the UNC School of Government. Brent, congratulations, I know that's a job to work through that and we appreciate your time and efforts to do that, so thank you for moving forward with that. And we'll have some other things we'll recognize in just a minute, so if you will, please rise for our moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge. Thank you. Please salute the flag. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll start tonight with a very special recognition that we will be on our local Legion Post, Post 29, who has been with us for, well, over 100 years when we celebrate 100 years tonight and we have several of our distinguished members that are with us. I know our Commander, Irv, is here, past Commander Wayne, and Bill Oxford, who was our National Commander for two years he served. I think that may be the only time that's ever happened. Only time it's ever happened. He got tied up in a COVID situation, had to stay on as the National Commander, but Bill and all you guys, and welcome. Mike, to hear, thank you guys for coming out tonight and we have a special recognition for you tonight as we honor the Dyser Kendall American Legion Post 29 and your 100th year anniversary. Isn't that amazing that it's been 100 years? And I'm going to read this and then we'll ask you guys to come up and if you'd like to talk to us a little bit, you want to tell us anything, that'd be great. I know that Joshua did a good job of putting together some history of this and worked together with putting this together. So, "Whereas the American Legion was founded in 1919, the year after War, War I ended, with the purpose of improving morale among our soldiers in providing services and support to American military veterans. And whereas Caldwell County American Legion Post 29 was organized in 1919, the first American Legion Post in the county, with 103 charter members from the ranks of the Army, Navy, Marines, and Coast Guard. And whereas in November 1921, Post 29 members voted to change the post name to honor Private Charles E. Dyser and Corporal J. E. Kendall, the first two soldiers from Caldwell County to die in World War I. And whereas Dyser Kendall American Legion Post 29 was officially chartered on July the 11th, 1922. And whereas in 1924, Post 29 members donated band instruments to Lenora High School and World War I veterans and Legion Member Captain James C. Harper founded the Lenora High School Band with the donated instruments. And whereas in the run up to World War II, Post 29 members helped recruit and register men for selective service, raised money for the victims and families of the Pearl Harbor attack, and raised funds to purchase a 75,000 aerial ambulance for England. And whereas on June 18th, 1943, Dyser Kendall American Legion Post 29 purchased a two-story house at 401 North Main Street to serve as post headquarters and later demolished and built the current building at the same location in 1948. And whereas Post 29 members have served veterans and the community in Lenora and Caldwell County for 100 years through banquets, dances, fundraisers, oratorical contests, Toys for Tots, our famous Legion baseball program, Boys State, volunteering, and so much more. Now therefore be it resolved that I, as Mayor, on behalf of Lenore City Council, thank Dyser Kendall American Legion Post 29 members, past and present, for serving and supporting each other, for giving your time and talents to the Lenora and Caldwell County and for your military service to this great nation, the United States of America, this the second day of August 2022." Gentlemen, come up. Bill, come up too. I want to thank you all very much, appreciate that. You're very welcome. I will present this to you and if you stay with us just a second, we're going to shoot some pictures in a minute. We have another thing we'd like to present to you, this is the City of Lenore flag and some city coins that we are very proud of and this is presented to Dyser Kendall American Legion Post 29 in recognition of their centennial anniversary, 1922 to 2022, by the Lenore City Council, Joseph L. Gibbons, Mayor, August the 2nd, 2022. Gentlemen, thank you and we certainly appreciate all you do for our community. We enjoy being able to use the Legion building when we have meetings and that kind of thing, but we also enjoy what, everything that you guys do to help this community in every way possible. So I'm going to give you the mic a minute if you'd like to say anything and then we'll shoot some pictures.
I'm the briefest of the bunch, maybe. We'd like to thank you for the recognition, we're looking forward to another 100 years and we really appreciate the efforts of the whole community and that's one of the focuses that we try to reach out and advise or explain to the community what our branches do, the Fire Department, the Police Department, EMS, the people doing, the first responders that do things that we don't want to do. So thank you very much for this recognition and we will hang this up in the hall and see you in 100 years.
Why don't we all come down council, we will come out here together, all you guys come up, shoot a picture, hold on for this. Come on this way. Get the barn door open. Take this thing. You just stand there laughing. Policemen and firemen every year. Y'all can't be in the picture. That's why. You missed him. No, dang. They're charged for that. Always got to push for it. Pro bono. I'm just going to take it apart. You guys need help. My turn. All right, that's the News Topic. All right, I'm going to do two without the flash and two with. Ready, one, two, three, two. And then two with a flash. One, two, three. Thank you. Flashing on. All right, here we go. Two with a flash. One. Thank you. No, no, then I would have charged you to get in. That's what I'm afraid of. We're very proud of our Legion baseball program, we didn't talk a lot about that, but you know, we've had several state champion Legion teams at Post 29 and that's been a fun thing to follow all these years, playing down at MS Deal in Granite Falls, used to play at Walker too, some years ago, and so we've appreciated that that program is remaining. Yeah, there you go. You've got all kinds of things going on. And the girls just, they were the number one in our district and they made it to the tournament, the state tournament, made it through the first two levels, even at the state tournament. Great. You know, we're all, we're proud of our sports programs in Caldwell County and we'd love to see our teams do well. We've had some great success over the years and this year's been another one with our community college teams doing so well and the Legion team was in the playoffs again, so it's great. Baseball is well-loved, you know that, football, it's, we all love that, but baseball is just one of those that gets a lot of recognition. Thank y'all again for being with us and we're honored that you do what you do. For Bill to mention a minute ago, that one other thing I meant to mention, that our City Manager, Mr. Hildebrand, has been selected to serve on the Appalachian Hickory Campus Advisory Council, which, you know, the new campus in Hickory for Appalachian State, they have selected 39 members of the area and Mr. Hildebrand, I think Mr. Dr. Porch are our two from Caldwell County that are part of that, we thank you for your service to that. So we'll see as that continues to grow in our area, so we're very proud of our relationship with Appalachian State and as it continues to grow on the new campus in Hickory, we'll see, you know, it is one of the best schools around the country. Oh, I don't have to say that. Anyway, we're proud of that, thank you for your service to that. Okay, we'll move on then to, we do not have matters scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items consisting of first minutes of the City Council Meeting of July 19th, 2022. Item B is the FY 2021 Tax Settlement Report, the FY 2022 Tax Receipt Charge, and this is in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes 105-321 and 352. This is a request that the FY 2021 Tax Collector Settlement Report and the FY 2022 Receipt Charge be authenticated by the City Council as submitted. And then item three is our resolution that we just did honoring the Dyser Kendall American Legion Post 29 and this will be for the approval of the resolution in honor for 100 years of Post 29's anniversary as was submitted. So that is our consent agenda items, A, B, and C. I will open it for any questions or motions.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through B, A through C as submitted.
We have a motion from Councilmember Stevens to approve the consent agenda items, items A, B, and C as presented. If there's no questions, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed. Thank you. That carries unanimously, that'd be one, two, three, five. I can count, I swear to you I can. Five on that. All right, next on our agenda, we have a special request from one of our citizens and we'll welcome Mr. Clay McCrary in just a minute to the podium and we have a resolution that we're going to talk about. I'm going to let Clay come up and address the council. This is regarding a proposed resolution in support of naming a scenic byway, the John Muir Parkway, this would be in Lenora and Caldwell County and would go all the way through to Watauga County into Avery County.
Yes, correct.
He's going to tell us about John Muir a little bit and Clay is very, very involved in our scenic parks and has always been, had a wonderful love and interest in that. We thank him that he has made, brought this to not only our attention, but to the attention of the North Carolina Department of Transportation, which is what we're going to be helping him do with our resolution in just a little bit. And so anyway, we will let you address us and tell us what, kind of what's going on. You do have some information in front of you talking about the Parkway and you have a map showing you the routes on there, so Clay, welcome.
Awesome. Thank you, Joe, and couldn't have got a better introduction there, but at this point, as most of you know, my name is Clay McCrary. I've spoken to pretty much everybody here on the phone about this so far, so hopefully you have some good background on exactly what this is and what it would do. I actually was in Elk Park last night and their town council up there went ahead and unanimously approved a resolution in favor of this state scenic byway, but it's always nice to be here amongst the folks here in Lenora who, and this is my hometown, so appreciate you, Joe, for allowing me to speak to this.
You're very welcome.
And I also want to say a quick thank you to Jenny Wheelock and also Hannah Williams with the Planning Department, they've been very instrumental in getting some of this together as well, including those maps that you see before you right now. That was actually Hannah Williams with the City of Lenora that did the work on those. But I really want to start off with this, and there's a famous quote and chances are that most of you up here have probably heard it before, and it's simply this, "The mountains are calling and I must go." That quote is actually a quote that is by the same man that's going to make this quote that I'm about to state right here that involves what I'm trying to do tonight. And the quote is this, "The drive from Roan Mountain to Lenora is, I think, the finest in America of its kind." Those two quotes are by the same man, John Muir, and John Muir is considered the father of the national parks. And the reason that Mr. Muir is considered the father of the National Park Service is because he was very instrumental with Yosemite National Park coming into existence. As a matter of fact, it was due to a camping trip with President Theodore Roosevelt in 1903 that the Yosemite Valley as we know it became part of Yosemite National Park. He was also very instrumental with Grand Canyon becoming a national park and Mount Rainier in Washington State. But what a lot of people do not realize about Mr. Muir is he also traveled here in the east and on some of these eastern travels where he went across the entire eastern seaboard from Canada, Maine, here into North Carolina, all the way down to even Florida, and this happened in 1898 where he made this quote. And that quote that he made, he actually referenced several more times in his journals and also in a letter to his wife as well, the quote that I mentioned was in a letter to his daughter. But I think this presents a unique opportunity for this area and I want to talk to y'all a little bit about that and I want to refer to the fact sheet that I kind of gave all of y'all and that's this printout right here that says scenic byway. So the first point that I want to make really quickly is the state of North Carolina currently has 62 scenic byways that are officially designated that allow motorists to experience a bit of the state's geography, history, and the breathtaking scenery while raising awareness for the protection and preservation of these treasures. Now, I want to be clear, these North Carolina scenic byways, they are chosen by NC DOT and they are ultimately approved by the North Carolina Board of Transportation, but that brings me back to my next point. An important step in this process is local support and that's obviously the reason that I'm here before you tonight. A local resolution of support would go a long way to encouraging the state to approve this with the North Carolina Board of Transportation. So I appreciate again y'all allowing me to be here for this. But just to let you know as well, North Carolina scenic byways, they cost local towns and counties absolutely nothing. They are completely funded and maintained by NC DOT, so that doesn't need to be a concern as far as y'all are concerned. Another thing to keep in mind is North Carolina scenic byway designations do not change any current roadway names and that also doesn't prohibit any local designations that are made honoring a local individual with a highway, so it's not going to change that and also if that's something that y'all wanted to pursue in the future, it will not prohibit y'all from doing that in any way, shape, or form if that's something you want to try to bring before the state. A state scenic byway name is really more of a nickname than it is anything and it's specific to the state scenic byway. So state scenic byway names, they range from descriptions of the route to historical references and tours and this is the one example I really want to point out. One of the current state scenic byways is the Lafayette's Tour and that's a byway that takes tourists on the historic route that General Marquis de Lafayette, a close confidant to George Washington, visited on his 1825 tour of the U.S. So really what I'm hoping to do with this John Muir Parkway is much the same thing. It will follow John Muir's travels here through our area from Roan Mountain to Lenora and use that to highlight some of our local history here. And to key in on that and getting on the local history, one of the biggest things it would do is the proposed John Muir Parkway would use Muir's travel to highlight local history like the Lenora Blowing Rock Turnpike, which was largely considered to be the best road into the Blue Ridge Mountains for its time, and I'm talking about across the entirety of western North Carolina. There are articles that date back to the early 1900s and late 1800s that state that that was the best route into the mountains and that's the exact route that Muir himself would have traveled in 1898 documented by his own journal. Another thing that's very interesting to note is the Historical Commercial Hotel that once stood in the square here in downtown Lenora where the commercial building is now and where, sir, a lot of us are familiar with Dead People Stuff antiques now being kind of in that same location. That commercial hotel is where Muir was a guest and I have the actual newspaper article from the Lenora News Topic dating back all the way to 1898 that lists him as a guest at that hotel. And another interesting thing that I want to highlight is the Carolina Northwestern Railroad, which obviously transported Muir from Lenora to Hickory while he was in route, actually to the Biltmore Estate, and it's very interesting and another quote that Muir made was basically that the forests over at Biltmore Estate were far inferior to the forest between Roan Mountain and Lenora. So that just tells you how highly he thought of this particular scenic journey. But this is the meat of what I want to talk about, these last two points. The proposed John Muir Parkway would use Muir's title as the father of the national parks and his well-known status as a famous outdoorsman in the national outdoor and hiking communities to encourage interest in traveling the roadway and visiting local communities along the way like here in Lenora. The proposed John Muir Parkway would also use Muir's revered status as an icon in the U.S. Department of the Interior and the National Park Service to further garner their interest in this area. I think this presents a unique opportunity for us today because quite frankly, we talk about it all the time. What can we do to get more people to downtown Lenora? And I think this is just another way that we could plug into that because this byway would literally come into downtown Lenora and you could either start it or end it right at the square in downtown Lenora because of Muir staying at the commercial hotel. And we, another thing that we talk about here in Lenora is we've always considered ourselves, and we are, the gateway to the mountains. Let's allow people to begin their trip to the mountains or end their trip to the mountains right here in downtown Lenora and this state scenic byway would help go a long way to doing that. Thank y'all so much and I hope you'll approve this resolution. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them as best as I can.
Thank you, Clay. Any questions of Clay? Before I'm going to get the resolution, I'm going to read it to you and we're in agreement, we're going to present it to him tonight for him to take to the North Carolina Department of Transportation for this presentation. I see this as, just like what we've done with the Overmount Victory Trail and many other things that we're trying to do here and we have Civil War trails here, we have several other things that come through here and I think that it's, it just adds to bringing people to our community. So, you know, a highway between here and Bull Rock probably should have been a scenic highway years ago, so anyway, anybody comments or anything?
I agree.
I'll read the resolution, in fact, it's all right with everyone and then we'll vote a little bit. This is a resolution in support of designated scenic byway named the John Muir Parkway in Lenora and Caldwell County. Whereas John Muir was a world-renowned conservation figure and is still widely regarded as the father of the national parks and his contributions as founder of the Sierra Club, a naturalist, author, and a botanist are of great consequence to many natural places and public lands across the United States. And whereas Muir wrote specifically about western North Carolina, that the drive from Roan Mountain to Lenora, 75 miles, is, I think, the finest in America of its kind. And Muir stayed at the Commercial Hotel Lenora in 1898. And whereas the scenic stretch of roadway Muir traveled still exists today and remains a place of undeniable beauty, recreational opportunity, and Appalachian cultural significance. And whereas this route Muir traveled encompasses U.S. Highway 19E for 2.4 miles, North Carolina 194 for 5.6 miles, North Carolina 181 for 3.4 miles, U.S. 221 for 19.8 miles, and U.S. 321 for 18.3 miles, and Main Street in northwest in Lenora for 1.7 miles. And whereas a significant portion of this proposed scenic byway travels along U.S. 321 and this proposed stretch of roadway merits scenic byway designation as it meets many of the intrinsic qualities of designation, including cultural, natural, historic, recreational, and scenic qualities. And whereas the stretch of roadway travels through places of historic and cultural significance in Caldwell County, including the city of Lenora, and would promote tourism and statewide interest in these areas and their unique history and scenery associated with the byway and Appalachian culture. And whereas this proposed scenic byway would end at the square in historic downtown Lenora and provide access to many important historical buildings, some of which existed at the time of Muir's visit, and would conclude at the former site of the Historic Commercial Hotel. Now therefore be it resolved that I, as Mayor, on behalf of Lenora City Council, urge the North Carolina Department of Transportation to officially designate this stretch of roadway as a state scenic byway and to name it the John Muir Parkway in honor of Muir's travels in North Carolina along the route and the exceptionally noteworthy quotes he made regarding the unique beauty and outstanding road quality encountered along this historic segment of the Parkway. This the second day of August 2022. Gentlemen, any questions, comments? I guess we need to take an official vote on it.
Do you need a motion?
We do.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution regarding the John Muir scenic highway as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Beal to approve the resolution. And whereas, the stretch of roadway travels through places of historic and cultural significance in Caldwell County, including the city of Lenore, and would promote tourism and statewide interest in these areas and their unique history and scenery associated with the byway and Appalachian culture. And whereas, this proposed scenic byway would end at the square in historic downtown Lenore and provide access to many important historical buildings, some of which existed at the time of Muir's visit and would conclude at the former site of the Historic Commercial Hotel. Now therefore being resolved, that I, as mayor, on behalf of Lenore City Council, urge the North Carolina Department of Transportation to officially designate this stretch of roadway as a state scenic byway and to name it the John Muir Parkway in honor of Muir's travels in North Carolina along the route and the exceptionally noteworthy quotes he made regarding the unique beauty and outstanding road quality encountered along this historic, this historic segment of the Parkway. This is the second day of August 2022. Gentlemen, any questions, comments? I guess we need to take an official vote on it.
Do you need a motion?
We do.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the resolution regarding the John Muir scenic highway as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion from Councilmember Beal to approve the resolution in support of designating scenic byway named for the John Muir Parkway in Lenore and Caldwell County. Any other comments? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Clay, if you'll come up, we'll present you with this officially, and we'll shoot a picture. You want to get one with everybody in? Let's do that. I mean, this is, this is not my thing, this is everybody's thing.
You're going that way.
No, no, I'm going this way.
Poor user interface.
Well, you know, I was the first one to mess up, but he was shown.
Thanks again, Clay.
You should have had that.
It's a terrible door.
Okay, we will continue on our agenda. And we'll move on to reports and boards of commissions. We do not have any tonight, so we'll move on to the report and the recommendations of our city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council, a couple items for information this evening. Cruising event will be held on Saturday, August 6th, beginning at 3 o'clock in downtown Lenore. The City-City Service Committee will meet on Monday, August 8th at noon. The Caldwell County EDC will meet on Tuesday, August 9th, 8:00 a.m., and that'll be held at the Civic Center. Lenore Business Advisory Board will meet on Thursday, August 11th, at 6:00 p.m., 3rd floor City Hall. And a gospel singing event will be held on Saturday, April 14th, 6:00 p.m. at the MLK Center. And also, I'd be remiss of not mentioning the 48th Annual Harambe Festival is underway right now at the MLK Center. And you can get information about all the events this week on our website if you have questions there. Also, the Parks Recreation Advisory Board will meet on Monday, August 15th, 6:00 p.m. City offices will be closed on Monday, September 5th, in observance of Labor Day. And then the Southern Sundown Four Mile Race will be held on Saturday, August 20th, beginning at 7:00 p.m. in downtown Lenore. And information on that, you can receive that at the www.downtownlenore.com. Any questions about any of those events?
Any questions, Mr. Hildebrand, concerning the events going on or anything else that might be coming up?
Tonight, we have two items for your decision. The first one's a bid award for Matt Cook Stadium lighting. Bids were received and opened on Wednesday, July 27th, 2022, for Sports Lighting Project at Matt Cook Stadium. This is a project we've talked about for probably over a year. We've raised some funds privately and some donations from the Lenore TDA and also the State of North Carolina to go back and fund this project. We're about $8,500 short. We're still trying to raise that money, and we'll try to conclude that in the next few days. But the low bid from that was from Camp Electric for $213,522. Kenny Storey's here tonight. He helped prepare the bid package and get those bids in. And we recommend approval with, for Camp Electric for $213,522.
All right, any questions? Mr. Storey is here, anything you want to add, Kenny, to it?
It's been a long time coming. I'll just say, I got a loud voice, so I don't want to come all the way up there. I think it's gonna be a great project for the city and for the community. You know, just so you know, I went to Lenore High School, and I had to see the lights coming down down there. So to get those back up will be a blessing for me and I think the whole city. I think it will help us do a lot of things on that end of town. In fact, that'd be a big one here. So Camp Electric got the low bid. They've done most of our lighting throughout the whole city at our Park Trac Race itself. And so they do a great, great job. Michael Tompkins with Tompkins Sports Lighting is local from Lenore. Always helps us out as much as he can on these lighting projects. So it's a good project. And so, I haven't, she got any questions from me?
And I would mention also, the Caldwell Rotary Club has helped raise funds. Appreciate their going to bat for that. And I know they're gonna try to raise the balance of those funds.
Yeah, we're still working on it.
Check's in the mail, right?
Mr. Mayor, I...
I would like to say thank you to the Rotary Club as well.
Seth Nagy, especially.
They are a big part of this, so those guys are a bookworm. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
This is just another piece of the puzzle for the campus up there. And that'd be great.
Yeah, this is kind of the first piece that's fallen in place that put together. We've got a lot to go with it, but we've got a lot of things already going at the campus that this is just gonna add to. It's probably the best field we have in, in our recreation program. So adding lights to it just...
We have the northernmost best fields across the state of North Carolina.
It is, it is.
And with lights being placed on it, we'll be able to do it. Hold on, hold on.
Right.
That's great.
Presswood?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the low bid as presented for the lights project at Matt Cook Stadium.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Presswood to, for the approval of the bid award to Camp Electric in the amount of $213,522 as presented and for the lights at the historic campus at Historic Lenore High School.
We'll wait, go ahead.
Go ahead, thank you.
That's probably a check for that balance of that money.
Somebody calling in.
Somebody calling in to donate.
It's a telethon, that's what it is. It's a telethon.
Excuse me.
Okay.
I apologize.
We have a motion. We'll take it in a check. We have a motion on the floor, again, from Councilmember Presswood. If there's no other discussion on that, I will call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you very much. We look forward to that, and we look forward to many great things happening down in this, this end of Lenore. I'll tell you that, so it's exciting. Mr. Hildebrand?
Your next item is a consideration of an offer to purchase property owned by the city of Lenore. And this property is located at 500 block of Wheeler Street and Harris Street in the West End neighborhood. The city has six lots up there we acquired back in 2013 through tax foreclosure, and they've been vacant for a number of years. One of the jointing property owners up there, Michael Corpeney, which owns three lots adjacent to this, has offered to purchase those six lots. Of those six lots, three of those are non-conforming, where three are conforming. But he can go back and consolidate some of those to make buildable lots. But he's offered $2,000 for all six lots. With that, that's 508 Harris Street, 5098 Harris Street, 514 Wheeler Street, 516B Wheeler Street, 516 Wheeler Street, and 518B Wheeler Street. Basically, 500 bucks for the three lots that are buildable and 500 for the advertisement cost. We recommend that the council approve that, will stop the upset bid process. And if it goes through, the next meeting, we can go back and formally transfer that property to him. So if you have questions, I know Ms. Wheeler likes here as well, and we'll try to answer those.
Okay. You heard the recommendation for, for us to consider the acceptance of the offer and the purchase of the lots for Wheeler and Harris Street in the amount of $2,000 as submitted by Mr. Michael Corpeney. Now, for those, I don't, I didn't add that up. What is it, a couple acres, maybe total?
Maybe one. It's less than acre overall.
Less than acre?
Yeah. Yeah, .9.
Okay.
And he plans to build, I think, construct three homes up there, so.
Well, it, it falls in line with our plan to get these things off our books and back into...
Back on the tax rolls, yes.
Tax rolls, certainly.
Sir?
Are you gonna make a mo, we need a motion for this?
Yeah, we'll need a motion to accept this offer.
But before we do that, I would just like to say, as Mr. Hildebrand alluded to earlier, that these lots have been vacant for several years. And particularly there on Wheeler Street, where you come off of Willow and turn left on Wheeler, you can see all of those empty lots there, which will greatly improve that interest into Lenore. And I can't think of a better person that would make better use of this property than Mike, Mr. Corpeney. He has several properties there on Wheeler Street and several properties throughout our city. So with that in mind, do I need to make a motion?
You can.
I'd like to make a motion that we will accept this offer for these lots on Wheeler and Harris.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion from Councilmember Perkins for the acceptance of the offer to purchase these lots. The North Carolina PIN numbers are listed, I'm not gonna read all those to you. They're, they are in here. And we also, I will add the legal advertisement for the notice of offer to purchase will be published in the news topic, starting a 10-day upset bid period as required by NCGS 168, 269, if we accept this, which it sounds like we're getting ready to do. So just wanted to make sure you knew that advertisement was being done. Okay, we have a motion on the floor. If there's any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. We appreciate that and hope that, Mr., you stay after him now and keep him.
I have to.
On doing that. Okay, we'll move on then. Anything, I don't have anything from the mayor's office at this point in time. I think we've got some terrible things going on for the rest of the summer that we'll be, we'll be working on and the plan's being made for future things. I know we had, he mentioned we got a music thing coming up in the near future, a couple more. All that, tonight, there is a senior citizens banquet up at the King Center for Harambe. Thursday night is the recognition banquet where they honor several, a couple of great people on the Harambe festival. That will also be at 6 o'clock at the King Center. So if anyone would like to go up tonight, they do have food available. And we, we were told to call Mr. Whittington when we're ready to go, and he'll have, make sure we have some coverage there on that. So if you'd like to do that, that is tonight as well. So anything before, any council members to come before us?
Nothing from me either.
I'm sorry, did I miss you?
No, no, you didn't miss me. My Roman numeral seven got omitted.
You're not on there, are you?
I'm not on here. But I have value.
Anything from our legal attorney, I'm sorry about that.
No, no, that's fine.
It isn't there, I looked, I usually cover it, so. Thank you, we appreciate that.
You're very welcome. I'm just a potted plant.
You did good, thank you for doing that. You're not a flooded plant. All right, nothing come for us in the council tonight? Anything else from anybody? If not, we stand adjourned.